Have people laugh, but I'm serious. So we'll move on to item four, which is report of officers. And the first item is introduction of Christine Harmon, who is recommended for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Harmon, would you please approach the podium? Welcome, and thank you for volunteering. If you would just take, you know, maybe 60 seconds and tell the board about yourself and why you're interested in the line.
My name is Christine Harmon. I live at 116 Maple Avenue. And I'm very interested in serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. I have an academic background in historic preservation from the University of Illinois, at Chicago, excuse me, the College of Art Architecture and Urban Planning. My specialization was in nineteenth, late nineteenth and early twentieth century buildings. I had the opportunity to do some field work when I was a student. Upon graduation, I went into the business world where my interaction with historic preservation was fleeting. But I maintained my interest in it through volunteering at the Dawes House as a tour guide for over 10 years. And I was an interpretive tour guide. I could guide, I could shape my tour to however I was the interest of people who were in a specific tour. So I have a background that includes academic training in historic preservation, but I've also worked in the business world. And I understand how other aspects can affect historic planning, such as legal aspects, property, rights, appraisal, valuation, community development, and just urban planning overall. So I'm looking forward to serving on the commission.
It's a wonderful background. And when we met in the fall, fall-winter, you know, I was very excited by that. So thank you very much for volunteering. Any of the trustees have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And by the way, a little bit of a secret, because you're at the second meeting, we were talking about this, I think you were appointed on the consent agenda. So you're actually officially on the commission. So, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 4.2, introduction of Charles Smith, who is recommended for appointment to the Appearance Review Commission. Would you please approach? Welcome, and also thank you for volunteering. You have not yet been appointed, because you were just recommended tonight. The next meeting, you'll be appointed. But if you would take a minute and share your background.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Charles Smith. I live at 1408 Isabella since 1991. I've had the joy of being an architect for my own house, and additions, additions, additions. And I'm a principal at a design firm called Canon Design in the city of Chicago. Have worked there for quite a while. I lead our education practice, our civic work, our science and tech work. And I was approached by my good friend, Bill Bradford, to consider volunteering. And I've always thought it would be a great point of being part of the community to help out. So I'm here to serve on the Appearance Review Committee.
Yeah, it's great. We have so many architects who are willing to volunteer. And for those of you who don't know, the process of Appearance Review, it's actually quite an iterative process and a collaborative process. And oftentimes, if you read the minutes of the meetings, you know, the architects that are on the Appearance Review Commission are making suggestions like, oh, you might not want to use that material. It might not weather as well as this material and the like. So it's really, it's actually a value-add process, I think, for many of our developers in town. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you so much. So the next board meeting, there is a vacancy right now. In the next board meeting, you'll be appointed, and you'll be ready to go. So thank you again.
Right.
Next item on the agenda is item 4.3, which is request for an executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to Section 2 Sub C Sub 11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. We will move on to our report from our village manager, Mr. Prentzner.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is item five, and that is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. So we will move on to our standing committee reports. First up, as always, is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Leonard.
All items on the consent agenda.
The next committee is the Finance Committee. That's item 6.2, Trustee Sullivan.
There's no report this evening.
Next is Municipal Services, Trustee Wolf. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Next is Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Okay. Then Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Wolf.
All items on consent.
Well, you actually have one.
Oh, no. Oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry. Just a big one.
Sorry, these engineers, they're looking to talk.
Okay. Okay. We have a report from Stantec regarding the Stormwater Action Plan.
So that's item 6.41. And I don't know, Ms. Berger, or is...
Well, who's starting here? We have kind of three, two things to cover very briefly before we get to the main event. Mr. Johnson is with us from Stantec. First, we'd like to have Mr. Berman give you a brief update on our public information efforts and the information we've been, how we've been putting out information, collecting it from residents. Second, we'd like to have the Finance Director speak to you briefly about the, to answer some of the funding questions that we had. And then we'll have Mr. Johnson, who is here to discuss the answers to the staging questions that the board had.
Okay, so Mr. Berman.
Okay. Mr. Prentzner is going to move the slides along for me tonight. So I think Tim just summarized what our presentation is tonight. So John, if you can go to the next slide here. Just a real brief update on where we're at on our public education campaign. We're well into it right now. Our stormwater-specific website is up and running. So is our online community engagement platform, which John Prentzner is monitoring on a regular basis and following up with residents who have questions and interactions with us. We had our first open house on February 8th. We had at least 60 residents there, at least 60 that signed in. I think there are more than that. There was a lot of good feedback received and a lot of good questions. So it was a really nice event. And our next one is scheduled for March 13th before our Village Board meeting. We've sent one direct, two direct mail pieces, actually. One, a four-page mailer directly to all households, specific to the stormwater projects. And then an insert in our most recent communicator, which went out a couple of weeks ago. And then this next bullet point is actually something that we just finalized today. And it's pretty, it's pretty neat, and I think it's going to be really helpful to residents. John Prentzner, who led this along with our GIS team, will demonstrate it. But it's going to help residents put in their address and identify, based on their exact usage on water and sewer, what their sewer bills could look like under the three projects under consideration. So John, you want to just walk us through it real quick?
So we'll have this portal and this link at several locations, including in E-News, all of our social media platforms, as well as our new website. But right now, if residents want to get to it, they can start on our website under Property Information and type in their address. When they do, it's all like Dumbles Go. It brings out, it brings up local attributes about your property. And this is specific to that property that was entered. So right now, we're looking at 2244 Elmwood. And depending on the resolution of your screen, you will see several tabs up here at the right, or at the top, I should say. And if you click on Stormwater Bill Estimate, this page will pull up your usage. And your annual usage is based on your average in 2017, showing you your annual cost, followed by the three different options. And then what the additional increase will be at certain stages in time, followed by your total annual bill by 2040.
So we did something similar at our open house, and we received a lot of positive feedback when residents were really able to understand the impact to their own personal bill, as opposed to just putting out the median number. So we're going to work hard to get this out there with our E-News and our last mailing, so folks can really understand what the impact is to them. Thank you, John. If you can go back to the PowerPoint. The last point on what we've done so far to date is that as we receive comments from the public, we are forwarding them to the Village Board every week or two, so that the board is not inundated with a stack of emails and comments on April 17th. We'll obviously include all of those comments as part of that board packet and post it to the website on the 17th as well. We just have a couple of more items that are in process. One is the public education video that we're working on finalizing this week, that will get up, that will focus on the three projects under consideration and the benefits that they have. The open house on March 13th. And then a final mailing that will happen in advance of our April 17 special board meeting, so residents know that that is our decision date. And that mailing may also address some of the financial discussions or phasing options discussed tonight, depending on how the conversation goes. And one last point that's not on here is, in our E-News, we're going to start answering one frequently asked question every week or two. So we get common questions, such as, why aren't we using green infrastructure? Or why don't we just buy out all the homes? So as these common questions percolate through, we'll answer one at a time. I think that's a more effective way to get that answer to the community than doing a full FAQ and simply posting it. So we'll keep pushing that out there every week. John, if you can go to the next slide. This is really a slide for Bridget, but for efficiency purposes, I'll just run through it real quick. And Bridget's available for questions. Her and her team had put together our MWRD grant application that was submitted on Thursday of last week. Staff prepared it. Both Christopher Burke and Stantec did a technical review on it. We applied for $22 million for Phase 1 of the sewer expansion project. That's the large trunk sewer down Lake Avenue. Our application did indicate that there will be additional requests in 2019 and beyond. This isn't a one-year grant program from MWRD. It's multi-year, and they anticipate having more funds available in 2019 and beyond. So as our project takes at least, you know, four or five years to design and complete, we're well positioned to keep applying for grants. We're in a good position. MWRD considers our projects shovel-ready, based on the level of engineering, concept and preliminary design completed to date. So we feel pretty good about it. But we shouldn't look at this as a silver bullet that's going to fund any of our three projects on a large scale at this point.
What's the total dollar volume of the MWRD grant program? I mean, is it hundreds of millions? Is it billions? Is it...
Twenty, twenty million? For the first round?
Well, no, but I mean for, in total. We're asking for 22, but what's the total bucket or pool that's available to communities? Do we know?
I think it's around 20 million.
Oh, so we're asking for, okay. So we're asking for all of it. Okay. So it's unlikely that we're going to get every dollar that the MWRD...
That could change and increase over time.
Right. Okay. So Ms. Berger said that it could change over time. It could be more or less.
I have a quick question also. Do we know when we'll hear back from MWRD on that?
They've not given the timeframe, and they were a little concerned about how many applications they would receive. And so obviously, they have to sort through those. But I would expect high, high sum.
Okay. Sounds good.
That's a good question.
I have a quick question on that grant application, too. That was for the, the grant application was for the first project? Okay. And then how would that, depending on what the Village Board decides, how would that change if we were going to go with a different project, other than the first project?
We had a meeting with MWRD and have been very transparent with them on where the village is at with this process. So they fully know that if the board chooses a different project, then we have enough flexibility to go back to them. It may not be with this funding cycle, but certainly with future funding cycles, to present a different project and a different funding request.
Trustee Dodd, did you have one as well?
I was going to ask the same question that Trustee Plunkett asked.
Okay.
But does, maybe I'll just ask it.
You could...
So, just so I understand, so this was for, assuming we go with the first alternative. And so that means if we do change it, we might, we might not get the grant for this current funding cycle.
We would certainly ask MWRD. I think there's some flexibility in how they're executing the grant program. I can't tell you what that outcome will be, though.
Yeah, my suspicion is if you, we actually got allocated a grant, that that's going to be harder than modifying it after the money was allocated to us.
Yeah.
But that's just a guess.
I think a main takeaway here is the amount of the potential award for this application is not that large. So it's not going to sway the board to say, well, we got enough money, we can do Option 1 and feel more comfortable about it. It's just not that, there's not enough money available for that. We're talking fairly small scale in this first year, and potentially more down the road.
But we ask for it all.
Yes.
Right.
If you're going to be the first wave of applicants in terms of having projects that meet the test of being shovel-ready now, you might as well ask for the biggest pot you can get.
Right.
That was the theory. Ask for the biggest project and the biggest amount.
Well, they're likely to scale you back anyways, in whatever they award you.
But if they're going to go on the basis of awarding a percentage of it, you might as well have asked for a bigger...
Right.
If they're going to do a 20 or, you know, like an 80/20, 20/80 match, you might as well ask for the big number.
Mm-hmm. Trustee Dodd?
I'm sorry. I have one more question then for you, Bridget, which is, was there, was there a deadline to this, such that we felt like we just couldn't wait until the April 17 decision?
Yes.
Okay.
There was a hard deadline of February 23rd.
Okay. Good.
So this next slide is the transition into Melinda's finance presentation. So this slide is, slide the board has seen before. It's just to set the table for the financial discussion, the three projects under consideration, what each one is, and the low and high-end dollar amounts.
Good evening. So this is something that's familiar to all of you. So I'll give you a moment, just to give you a chance to reacquaint yourself with the numbers that we're talking about. So in option number one, we have talked about a value anywhere between 80 to 95 million. In option number two, we've talked about a value somewhere between 70 and 80. And then in option number three, we've looked at anywhere between 48 to 55 million on those And John's going to come up here again to click the slides for us. So, so this next slide is, as Mike has alluded to before, we have spent quite a bit of time looking at a bunch of the different finance, financing options, and what it might mean to a resident over time. But after we had the open house, there seemed to be a lot of questions centered around, how would the fees change over time? So what we had given folks, the notion of, is where a median bill is right now, so that's the 356, and in 2040, that it looked like that median bill could be roughly another $425 above and beyond that. But people wanted a sense of how that scaled over time. So in the next slide, that's what this is supposed to give you some sense and some feel for. So I'm going to step back for a moment and just remind you again, there are a lot of assumptions that have gone into the model that we built in order to work through this. So we are assuming things like a 4% interest rate. We're assuming that we maintain a AAA rating. We're assuming that this is on our sewer bill, that we apply the fee. But it's to give you some feel for how the fee will change over time. And the reason why it looks a little different is that I was able to get some information from the engineers in terms of when the construction projects would need to occur, and the different options that we're looking at. So I went back and I worked with the financial advisor and said, okay, if we take care of, if I need this much money for the village to accomplish this project by 2020, and if I need this much two years from then, and I need this much another year from that, let's kind of put the scales together and look at what those fees might be. So I am suggesting right now that we would have several different bond issuances, no matter which option that we choose. And so what I've done is I've layered that in over time. I've looked at our existing debt service. I've made some assumption about what our operating costs will be over time. As we've talked about before, the revenues, I'm assuming that our usage will remain flat over time. This, then, is what the resulting costs will be over time. So in option number one, what we're saying right now is, given that sort of matrix that we have, if we start at 356, we're going to add roughly another 420, just for the sewer improvement program that we're talking about right now. In option number two, we would add about 357 to the current median bill. And for option number three, we would add about $244. Are there any questions I can ask, answer? Yes?
If, I'm assuming the stormwater utility is still on the table, and I'm assuming also that the prices would be about the same, whether it's actually billed as a stormwater utility or billed as a sewer increase?
Correct. That was one of the things that we had talked about back in November. And it was to say, we are looking, at that meeting, we talked about the three different options in terms of how we could pay for this. There was the property tax bill, and we talked about why that would not be a good option to go with.
And less so now with the change in the tax law, certainly. That was the biggest advantage, was the deductibility.
Correct. The next option that we talked about was a stormwater utility fee. And we talked about where Wannecock was, and some of the things that they had done. And now we have ourselves started on that process. But since I don't have any sort of hard numbers to work with right now, it'll be more difficult for me to give you an idea exactly what that rate would be. So what we do have is our sewer utility fee. So that's what we're working with right now, to help give some, again, context in terms of what this could mean.
And if I could jump in real quick, we are in the process of drafting an RFP for a stormwater utility feasibility study. We hope to have that on the street by April.
Okay. That's great. Yeah.
Trustee Plunkett. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because the way I look at it is, as we've discussed last fall, whichever project is chosen, X amount of money needs to come in the door.
Yes.
And it would turn out being about the same amount that would come in, whether it's this way or through the stormwater utility fee.
You're correct. It's not going to change the debt service amount. It's just how are we going to pay for that debt service?
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Plunkett.
Thank you. This graph, over time, is that, what kind of phase-in construction time is this assuming? Is this assuming that we do it all at once? Or, you know, we talked, there's a phase-in discussion later, too?
And, so that's one I want to be careful with, so that I'm not confusing folks over the phasing. I am not, right now, proposing in front of you the phase that's going to be discussed in just a few moments, in terms of the project. What I looked at is if we started with, like, let's say, option number one. In the first three years, you would have the construction, the design work that would happen. And then two years, another two years out from that, we would need a tranche of money to satisfy some of the construction work. Another year from then, or two years from then, we're going to need another tranche of money, and then another tranche. That's the phasing that I'm looking at. But it doesn't mean, in terms of phasing out the work over time, it's actually looking at how the cash would be needed for doing the project, what I'll call upfront and right away.
Right. So that's, this is, this is doing it as fast as you can.
Yes.
That's what your analysis has.
Correct.
Which has some sort of delays in it, built in.
You are correct. Because you couldn't do all of it all in year one, and you wouldn't need the cash all in year one.
Right. But I think residents would be surprised to see that, you know, not all of that is happening over the next 20 years even. That some of that, some of that project is being funded up to 2040.
Well, is that the shape, but is that the shape of debt service?
Debt service cost.
Yeah, that's the shape of the debt service.
You would issue 30-year bonds. And so you're, it's how that would get layered in over time. So even though we looked at level debt service, our current debt service, if you remember from our meeting before, that has some ebbs and flows to it. So as you kind of stack this on, that's what causes the rate to kind of change a little bit over time. So it's not indicating when the project would be finished. It's indicative of how we would pay off the debt service.
So let me restate it. In the early years, we're probably paying a lot of interest only.
Correct.
We're paying some principal, but much more interest. And we're paying principal and interest on existing bonds, which is already covered by our sewer fee.
Yes.
And then as we go further out, the existing bonds have gone away, probably. But we've got to pay the principal and interest, now more principal, and bigger payments on this, on this debt.
You're correct. Because currently, right now, we have roughly 40 million in outstanding sewer bonds. And so that's already part of the 356. And it would actually be part of the debt service that we currently have outstanding.
Other questions? Trustee Sullivan?
Why'd you use 4% rate?
Because currently, that's actually, if we were to go to the market right now, that's not so far outside what you could currently get in the market. But whether I'm going to tell you that that's the rate that we're going to get by the time we actually go to issue that, I can tell you this much. Before, we had sort of what we call the new normal, you would have used a 6% interest rate assumption if you were going to run something out.
So do we know, then, do we have an idea of if, for every 100 basis points that the rate increases, how much this cost would go up?
Um, you know, that one I'd have to think about a little bit. And definitely by next time, I'd have that number ready for you.
What, if our rating drops, what would the rate be?
Well, I think, right now, the spreads between a AAA, and if we had a rating downgrade, I'm going to say that's probably going to cost us at least 25 basis points, if not, if not more.
That's all, you're making a lot of assumptions in saying that as well about the state of Illinois and all the rest.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's so many moving parts.
And with all the tax changes that are going on right now, again, that's, that's still, we haven't felt the full impact in terms of what that's going to do to the sale of tax-exempt bonds.
Trustee Dodd? Look like you want to ask a question. Okay.
So the next several slides, I'm just going to go through. This is actually just for your information. It is the same information, just laid out in sort of a different table for the different options. This slide, however, is one that should be familiar to you, because it's one that we talked about before. And the purpose of this was, again, to give you some context in terms of what it costs right now in the village for the different services that residents receive, and what it might mean, given the stormwater improvement program option that you go with. So currently, right now, if we look at the text box that's up there, existing services cost a little over $2,500 annually. If we layer on now what the additional cost would be from the debt service expense with services 30 years from now, and we're assuming roughly a 4% increase annually, then with the stormwater improvement program, we're going then up to a little over 6,000 annually would be the cost over time in 30 years. Can I answer anyone's questions about that?
And really, the message here is relative to your overall, your property tax is a lot bigger than your sewer bill today.
Correct.
In essence.
Yes.
Any question, oh, Trustee Dodd, sorry.
So I did have just one question. I guess going back to that earlier slide for just a minute, where you're showing it kind of going out to 2041. So, because we're basically implementing this new sewer fee for whatever, whatever we decide to pay for this particular project. So when would we expect, or would we expect that to go away?
The bonds themselves?
Yeah. Like, what's the...
So we would issue 30-year bonds.
Okay.
So all of this is based on 30-year bonds?
Okay, Ms. Malloy, I think that's the questions for you. And one thing I want to just comment on, there's a lot of information, and we haven't even got to the really dense information yet from the engineers. And I had been talking with staff, and I think it would make sense for our next meeting, Mr. Johnson's going to be here anyways for an open house. I thought it would make sense to put him on the agenda, so that trustees don't feel like they got to ask all their question. Like, I mean, we got some of these materials, we got rather late. And just so everybody has time to reflect on the information that we are given tonight and ask questions. And I think, I don't think I'm surprising you, right? The staff ran that by you already, that you could attend the board meeting. And we may also, I think the, the March, the second meeting in March will be a little bit more lightly attended by the trustees because of spring break. Then we'll have a meeting in April, and then the off week is the week of the decision we're trying to make. So it may also make sense, depending on how we do on the March 13th meeting, that, you know, why not have the engineers here for the, for the April meeting as well, so that we can, you know, stay sort of as in tune as we can with the project, and it's not sort of, gosh, it's been two months since we've talked about sewers, now let's all get together and try and make a decision together. So I just wanted to let the board know that that's, that's the plan in that respect. And hopefully, people will find that helpful and a good use of time in our meetings. So, with that said, welcome back. Good to see you.
No, thank you all again for your time and attention. And, and there is a lot of material. I'll try to go through some things at a fairly high level. Please stop me if you have questions as we go, and I'll try to answer those. The purpose of the discussion tonight, and let me get my slides moving here. All right, what is the trick? I'll do it with the... Where's my guy here? What's the?
John, you may have a...
Let's try that. There we go, I'm sorry. So the, the analysis that, I wanted to brief you on tonight, we were asked to look at the phasing of these projects a little bit over time, and really to focus on two questions. How would phasing of the projects obviously affect the costs of the different alternatives? And then, secondly, what would phasing of the projects mean in terms of the time to deliver benefits? How quickly would we be able to provide benefits to residents throughout the west side of Willmet? In looking at this, really, we looked at kind of a three-step process. The first issue is to look at the projects, and, and from a construction standpoint, try to figure out, how would you break those projects up into packages that could be phased? What's the logical way to divide the projects up? And again, the, I'm presenting scenarios to you tonight. You could talk to five different engineers, probably get five slightly different versions of how you'd break the projects up. But I think these provide a pretty good indication of how to understand how the phasing works. The second question is then, how quickly, or over what time period, would you implement those phases? So if you have five phases, would you do them in five years, in 10 years, or in 20 years? So we've developed three different scenarios that we'll walk through, to show you how those work. And then the last is to then look at those cost and benefit impacts, in terms of what does that phasing mean for each of the alternatives? So in terms of the construction packages, there are a number of somewhat subjective criteria that we look at, and I think you would find contractors looking at. But some of the major items, generally in the construction market, for a major civil project of this size, you want to have a certain dollar value to attract contractors with the capability, the bonding, the insurance to do work of this size. If you have projects that are very small, you may attract a larger group of potential bidders, which is good from a competitive standpoint. But you may also run the risk of getting some contractors who are, who are not capable of really doing the magnitude of work that's proposed. If you go too large, then you limit the competition. So about a $10 million to $25 million contract value is what we treat as kind of a sweet spot for this type of major work with large structures and large pipe. Obviously, with these projects, there's some logical breakpoints in terms of construction, where pipe sizes change, or where alignments change, where you move off of one street to another, or the pipe size changed dramatically. If there's open cut versus some tunnel construction, typically, if you're going to mobilize a tunneling contractor, the ideal thing is to put as much tunneling in that contract as possible, so he mobilizes one time, and perhaps not in multiple phases. Kind of from the benefit side, can we package the projects in such a way that we, when we complete a phase, we've done enough work to actually generate benefits, so that we're not just putting pipe in the ground that doesn't do anything, but we're actually getting to a milestone? And then lastly, and this is a particular concern, I think, to the village and the residents, will be, how much disruption is the village willing to tolerate within a given period of time? Certainly, there are advantages to moving the project forward very quickly, but we're talking about with some of these alternatives, as much as eight miles of sewer, having eight miles of streets under construction over a period of two or three years, could be quite disruptive to the community. And so those are other factors that, that come into play. Again, the goals that we looked at, in talking with staff, were really to look at, how could we phase the projects to maximize early benefits? Were there ways to do the projects in such a way that we could deliver benefits earlier in the, in the program? And then, secondly, where we couldn't deliver benefits immediately, how do we make sure that we're, we're developing phases that build upon one another and work towards accomplishing the most benefits as possible? So this is a graphic that you've seen a number of times, but this is, is, the blue areas here indicate areas of street flooding or inundation on the west side of Willmet, for the 10-year design storm that we've been working with. The, the white boundaries and the letters have no real significance, other than kind of grouping problem areas for the purpose of phasing, and kind of looking at, at different neighborhoods, if you will, that are flooded. And so as we worked through the phasing process, this was something we kind of referred to, to see how could we package elements of the project to, to deal with those issues. So I'm going to walk you through the three alternatives that we've talked about, and we'll walk through maps first, that show how we've talked about breaking the projects up into packages, and which packages would potentially go first, second, third, in, in the process. And then after that, we'll look at some charts and some tables that show more quantitatively how that would affect the cost and the, and the benefits, the impacts, if you will. So this is the, the first alternative, alternative one, that came out of the Burke report, that we're currently calling the sewer expansion project. So this is the largest amount of large diameter conveyance. There's no storage in this particular project. And it involves conveyance, it basically extends across the whole west side of Willmet. The way that we've phased this particular project, conveyance alternatives by, by design have to really start at the downstream end to provide benefits. It doesn't do us any good to build a big pipe at the upstream end of the system, if we don't have capacity to move that water downstream. So the nature of this project really requires that it be phased, if you will, from west to east. So the green, the highlighted green, so the yellow lines on here are the proposed sewer improvements. So the area kind of highlighted in green at the, at the western edge of the village would be Phase One. That would bring us from the stormwater pump station back to about the public works yard. Phase Two is the area highlighted in purple, kind of through, along Washington Avenue, that long stretch, and picking up areas adjacent to that. In this case, then, Phase Three would be going down to the southern part of the west side, so down towards Willmet Avenue, picking up those areas along Willmet Avenue and Glendale Road. Phase Four goes up Ramona and across Lake Avenue. And then Phase Five is the upstream end of the system, going up Hunter Road and into the Kenilworth Gardens area. So each of those elements has a, has a cost associated with it. The, the, we've, we've talked about estimates, and obviously, their ranges. For the purpose of this discussion, I'm going to present kind of single cost for each of these alternatives. We haven't changed our approach in terms of ranges, but for this analysis, we needed to simplify it, to kind of work off a single cost for each alternative. So this alternative, little, little under $85 million in terms of construction costs, about $10 million in design and construction services engineering, excuse me, and then a total of about $95 million. And that's the, the upper end of that range for this project.
So, but, to your point, just a point of clarification, if you did build, let's say you got half of it built. The first phase, probably not a lot of benefit, but if you had half of it built, there will be some benefit to the areas that haven't been built yet, in that, you know, that, the downstream pipe is draining faster, so you're still going to get some benefit, it's just not the full benefit that, that is modeled.
That's correct.
Okay.
So this is, this was the sewer expansion alternative. Any, any questions on this one? I'm going to, I'm going to just walk through the maps for these three, and then I said we'll go through the charts.
I have one question.
Yes, Trustee.
The construction cost, including contingency?
Yes.
So when we talk about this project being 80 to 95 million, are you, is the total project cost of 95, is that because of the increased cost for the phase in, or is that just because you're including?
No.
Where, where's the variable there?
Right. So the, the variable, if you recall, going back to, to middle of last year, we had some meetings, and there were estimates that were put together by the Burke team, as they did their original planning. And then we, when we came in and reviewed the project, we reviewed that. We felt that there were some elements in the estimate that were, where the costs needed to be a little bit higher. So our estimate was, was in the 90, $95 million range, their estimate was the $80 million. I think we had a, we had a healthy discussion, and agreed that engineers can disagree on construction costs for this type of work. And so the village, at that point, said, let's, at this point in the process, very early on in the design, we agreed to kind of carry ranges forward for each of the projects. So the, the range does not have anything to do with the phasing at this point, it just has to do with the variability in bid costs. Even if we had fully designed this project and put it out to bid, there's a good chance that the bid prices that would come in would vary 10, 15, 20%. So, so that's why we've kind of carried that range.
So this is the high end of the range?
It is. It is. We've used, just, again, to simplify the analysis that we've done here, we have used the STAN-TEC costs, which are generally higher than the VERC costs that were developed before, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this is the higher end of the cost, but just, to just build on Trustee Plunkett's question, but this isn't building in the variable that if we were going to go with the phasing approach, it's possible that we would phase it, the time parameters would be extended as well. Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a reason why we would do the phasing, I believe. And this, that's not taking this into account. So, the, so the 14 million, I'm just going to use the last, you had said it'd be five phases, the last phase might be the $14 million, or the Kenilworth Gardens, just because you, that's, you want to start with the closest to the pumping station.
Right.
But if that, but that's assuming they're kind of all done within a shorter timeframe than an extent, than over time, correct?
Yes.
These are $20.17, is that right?
So what we're presenting right now on here is, is constant $20.17. When we get to the charts, you will see, the charts that we've presented, we've run constant $20.17, as well as inflated dollars.
Okay.
Just to give a sense. And it's, there are two items, I think they're important to understand. One, it's more from an engineering perspective, but sometimes there's a question about, does phasing a project, just breaking into multiple components, increase the cost, because you have multiple mobilizations? And again, in talking with our construction team, and, and looking at a project of this size, a general feeling is that while, while there is some additional cost to having multiple mobilizations, having different construction packages, that by making these construction packages a more reasonable size here, that there, you also tend to get more competition on a $15 million construction job than you might on a $50 million construction job. So again, for our purposes right now, we've, we kind of treat that as a wash, that there's a pro and a con. To your point, though, I think, when you do, when we do start to look at the charts with the inflation numbers, it is important, then, that that's, that's where there's kind of a nexus between the engineering and the financial planning. Because the financial planning, the bonding and financing, takes into account how the time value of money. So, so we're getting into kind of a...
But your analysis doesn't. Yours is just gross, like, hey, if you wait 10 years, and you have 3% inflation...
That's correct.
The same dollar costs more. From a finance person's point of view, that dollar 10 years from now is not worth as much as a dollar today. And there's a ma, there's math that you do to balance those off, depending on your assumed inflation rate and your assumed discount rate.
That's correct.
So...
And we'll, we'll see that when we get to the charts.
Yeah, okay.
So let me just walk through the other alternatives here quickly, to review that. So the, the second alternative that we've called, for short, the hybrid alternative, so this is a blend of conveyance, plus one of the neighborhood storage projects up in the Kenilworth Gardens area. This came out of, again, our, an analysis that was a look to see, could we find a more cost-effective way to deliver the same benefits across the west side? And if you recall, the three alternatives we're considering don't quite provide the same benefits across the west side. They're all designed for a 10-year level of service, but the, the extent to which they serve the full west side varies a little bit across the three alternatives. In this case, the, perhaps the difference between this and the first alternative we looked at is, because we have a neighborhood storage component, the village could decide, and what we've presented here, in order to get early benefits, is to phase that neighborhood storage project as Phase One of the project. So in this case, the area highlighted in green in Kenilworth Gardens would be Phase One. That decision was made, because we can do that work and immediately get some benefits in that area. Then, because the remainder of the project is conveyance, it would have to then go back down to the downstream end and work its way back up. So Phase Two would be the segment from the pump station to the public works yard, and so on, as we move eastward. Yes, Trustee?
From an engineering point of view, would it be feasible to do Phase One and Phase Two simultaneously?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No. And, and, and we'll look a little bit when we get to the charts. We've kind of, again, with the timing, if there's, there's, certainly in that case, because you have projects at kind of different edges of the, of the west side, there wouldn't be as much overlap in, in construction impacts. And again, this, this alternative, I believe the numbers that we've shown, $70 to $80 million for the purpose of, of showing a single number here to compare things, we're showing a total project cost of about $76 million, with about 68 of that being construction cost, about $8 million, and being engineering, total being 76. And then the third option, the, the neighborhood storage only option, if you will, which relies on the three storage facilities and the three parks, obviously creates the most flexibility in terms of phasing. Again, our approach here was to look at each of these projects, and, and two things come into play. With the storage projects, it's kind of the opposite of conveyance. You need to start at the upstream end, because by holding water back upstream, you then create the potential for a downstream project to work. If we were to build a storage facility downstream, before we provide detention upstream, that, that facility could be overwhelmed. So in this case, in terms of looking at phasing, our options were to make Phase One either the, the Centennial Park project and the associated conveyance there, or the Kenilworth Gardens project. And just by looking at the totals, properties and structures benefited, it looked like we could get more out of the Centennial Park project. So that was listed as Phase One here. Phase Two is in downstream of that, is the project that's attributed to Hibbert Park. Phase Three then jumps up to Kenilworth Gardens. And then Phase Four is some, some conveyance improvements in the west of, west of Hibbert Road.
Are those, are those new, those conveyance? Have those always been part of Phase Three?
No, those have always been part of this project. There, there is a significant, if you recall, again, the topography, the lowest part of the west side is kind of that southwest corner of the village. And so even with the storage, there, there are a large number of properties that are vulnerable in that area. So there is conveyance required there. Why that works in this case, is because we've now detained water upstream. So we've basically, we're holding water back, freeing up some capacity in the downstream trunk sewers, and so we can put a little bit of conveyance down there without building more capacity to the pump station. So those are the, the three alternatives that have been considered, and gives you a sense of kind of how we've broken them up into packages, if you will, and the order of those packages. So then the next question was, how quickly do we implement those, and what does, what does that do? Again, for the purpose of just not having an infinite number of scenarios here, we've looked at really three, three options. One, we've called no phasing, which basically is the project where we, we design everything right out of the box, and we try to get it done as quickly as we can. Whether that would mean it'd be multiple construction contracts, that's a, that's a variable that could be decided later. But the idea is, they're not really specific milestones. That work could be packaged however, and it would be to try to get it done as aggressively as possible. The second scenario we looked at is a 10-year implementation schedule, and the third is a 20-year implementation schedule. And again, those are somewhat arbitrary, but they, they seem to provide a reasonable way to kind of spread the projects out. The way that we looked at how that would impact the cost of each project, and this is just an example for one of the scenarios, we broke each phase up into a detailed design and bidding phase, a construction phase, and then what we call construction engineering, broke the costs up into those three categories, and then programmed them over time. So what this spreadsheet basically shows is, for this, this was the sewer expansion, or the full conveyance option, a 10-year schedule. So the, the first column is the, the phases and elements of those. The second column is the total cost, adding up all of those, the different elements. And then basically, we looked and said, how much of that cost would be expended over time in each of the different years? And again, there's a fair amount of subjectivity in, in the percentages, but this is looked at in terms of preliminary engineering, taking, you know, again, if it starts in 2018, later this year, taking part of 2018, part of 2019, and then looking at, at the timeframes that we thought were reasonable for design and, and bidding of these projects. The vast majority of them were showing a two-year timeframe for construction. Some of that may be restoration, but it gave us a reasonable way to spread these out. So, in this case, you see that there is some work going on in every year over that 10-year period. And there's basically a, a table like this for each of the alternatives and each of the implementation schedule timeframes. You can then apply the cost for each element to those percentages, and you can spread that cost out over time. The result, then, for each option is a table that looks like this. And you might think of this as a, a cash flow table, if you want. So the first column is the years. In this case, we've got a 10-year schedule from 2018 out to 2027. The second column is design engineering costs. So again, in this case, we've shown preliminary engineering for the whole project being done in the first two years, but then the detailed design engineering for each phase, being done as that phase comes up. So there is engineering that would be done for Phase One in years 2020 and 2021. There's an engineering that would be done for the last phase of this project, all the way out in 2025 and 26. That's just a way to kind of spread, again, spread those costs out. And also, it provides the opportunity to take lessons learned from each phase and incorporate them into the design for the subsequent phases.
Between the phases, you go from Phase One to Phase Two, if you, do you need to start Phase, the next phase immediately, or what if you've said, you know, we're going to start the next phase a year or two later?
Again, it, it depends on the timing frame, so...
But that'll sort of give you the 20-year schedule, won't you?
Right. So with this, the way we've laid out the 10-year with five phases, they basically are concurrent. You, you do one, and as soon as one's complete, you move to the next.
Is there any harm? Because you made a comment on the neighborhood storage, I didn't make sure I followed you. You said you have to do the downstream first, before you do the upstream?
Neighborhood storage is the other way, right? You do the upstream first.
So if you just do the upstream first, but not the Phase Two of that, is that a problem?
No. So with, with upstream, with the neighborhood storage alternative, if we do the upstream, we're detaining water there, we're holding it back. So we're providing benefits in that area. And as, as President Blinsky said earlier, there would be some slight benefits downstream, because we're holding that water back. We certainly wouldn't be transferring the problem. And then the same with the conveyance in the opposite direction. As long as we start downstream and move upstream, we're making it better as we go, and wouldn't, wouldn't transfer problems. Just the other columns, the, the first few columns in this are fairly straightforward. Just the other columns, the, the first few columns in this are fairly straightforward. Design, engineering, construction is obviously the largest component of the, of the project. Services during construction is the resident engineering. So then we have a total cost by year. The next to the last column on the right is cumulative spend. So you see over time how that, that spend goes from $950,000 to the 90, roughly 95 million here. And then, to the question that was asked earlier, the final column is a cumulative spend with inflation. So this is basically just saying, assuming 3% per year inflation, and saying that the, the actual bid cost, so a project that we opened bids on in 2025 will likely cost more than it would if we opened those bids today, just because of inflation. That's not, that's really there just to kind of provide as a point of reference.
Right. And that's, again, you, you referenced it, but I'll reiterate it. This isn't a financial analysis. This is an engineering analysis, so you're just adding, you're not doing net present values-
Correct.
Or applying a discount rate to the value of a future dollar. And that's something that Melinda can do for us later if we would like it. But because, you know, a dollar today, you know, for the non-finance people, if you have, you'd rather pay for something in 10 years if it's the same amount-
Correct.
And even if it's a little bit more, maybe.
Correct.
And that's, by the way, why we borrow money. Same, same concept.
Exactly. So, so these were, these were sample tables, just to show the, the work that's been done. Again, we talked about inflation being assumed here at 3% per year. So then what is this, what's the output? And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk you through, there are a series of nine of these charts. I'm, I'm not gonna go through the gory details of each one, but I'll try to use the first one as an example and step through and let you ask questions about the others if-
Right. And I do want to reiterate that, you know, we're gonna have more opportunity to ask questions. I know this is not the only time to get all your questions out on these charts.
Absolutely.
Mr. Johnson's coming back.
Very good. So the, this is really just a graphical representation of the information. We just talked about the cost. And so the, the solid black line reference, is reference to the, the axis on the left side, the millions of dollars. And that represents a cumulative spend. So for, this is the sewer expansion option. And you'll see that number goes up to about 95 million dollars. The no phasing scenario is basically a five-year, in this case, it's looking at implementing that project over five years, which is a pretty aggressive schedule for doing 95 million dollars worth of work in this area. The dashed line is the cumulative spend with that 3% inflation added in. And then the two bars, the two columns, if you will, those relate to the right-hand axis. And those are indications of the, the benefits, if you will, of the project. So the blue bars are the number of structures that are protected. And if you recall before, we've differentiated between structures and properties. So structures are where we estimate that this is a, a home where water would actually get up to the home and potentially enter the home. Properties flooded are areas where we've estimated that the water would cross the property line. And so it might just be on to, just across the sidewalk and maybe not get into the home. But we've, we've used that to kind of carry those two items forward. So structures are the actual physical buildings. Properties are just the parcels, if you will. And this shows that all, the sewer expansion option, fully implemented, protects about 95%. We think we could probably get it to 100%, but we've been, for discussion purposes, protects about 295 out of roughly 311 vulnerable structures on the west side for the 10-year event. So by 2021, we start to get some benefits as we build some of those downstream phases of the project. And then by 2022, when the full project is complete, we've achieved the full benefits for this, this scenario. If I flip the page, now if we spread that project out to 10 years, the endpoints are the same in terms of the benefits. So the total number of structures protected, the total number of properties protected at the end of the project are the same, but you see there's obviously a spread over time. And it is important, I guess, with the sewer expansion option, to note that, I'm gonna flip back real quick. Under this scenario, because we have to build that first segment from the Lake Avenue pump station back to Public Works Yard, that first section doesn't get us a lot of benefits in terms, as, as President Belinsky said, it gets us some marginal benefits for everybody. But in terms of solving the problem for an entire neighborhood, it doesn't do that. So you'll see on these charts for this scenario, the first three years, we don't really generate specific benefits. And the 10-year option, we're, we're five years out before we see benefits. And then again, going out to a 20-year schedule, again, just because we spread the work out further and kind of inserted gap years between, you're further out before you see those benefits. Let me stop and let you digest that. Any, any questions? Do those charts make sense? Okay. Questions? So that was the first three, were the sewer expansion option, the conveyance option. Same three charts now for sewer expansion plus the one neighborhood storage project in Kenilworth Gardens. So again, here you see the, the total number of structures and properties protected is slightly lower for this alternative than it was for the first one. There is some, some timing with the, the kind of the aggressive no phasing option. You see the benefits start to come in over the 10-year period, and, and those are spread out. And then you go out to the 20-year schedule, and again, the benefits accrue over that longer period of time. And again, with this one, there are some early benefits because we would do phase one up in Kenilworth Gardens and do the neighborhood storage project there. But then, we have to go back to the downstream end, so there's a lag before we get to that next wave of benefits under this alternative.
And that's sort of the, the gap there, where you, where you see the dollar's going up, but the green bar is not going up. That's building that pump station to the expressway or over the expressway piece of it?
That is correct.
Okay.
You mean at 228 to 229?
Yeah, on the, on the 20-year, it's sort of 2024 to 2029, yeah.
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 And then, I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
I'm sorry, I have to go back to something you said earlier, because I just don't, I want to understand, I understand for the conveyance, why you need to do downstream first. That makes a lot of sense, because if you don't have the capacity to get it there, it doesn't matter that you have all this capacity in the upstream. But I'm, I'm confused about the neighborhood storage that you need to do upstream first, because the neighborhood storage solutions to me seem so, in, each of them seem so very independent of each other, for lack of a better, I mean, and so I'm confused by that.
They, they are a little bit, but we have to remember that the detention basin there isn't the ultimate disposal point for the stormwater, right? We're holding stormwater in that detention basin during the storm, and then it still has to be released back downstream. So it, it, all of that water still eventually goes out through the Lake Avenue pumping station. So if we, when we build the detention facility upstream, we're holding some water back during the storm, we're freeing up a little capacity in that downstream sewer. If we do it the other way around, and we build the detention basin, the downstream project, we haven't freed that capacity up. And so it's, it's, again, the impacts may not be huge, but generally, that's the way you have to think about the project.
Okay, that makes sense. I was, okay, thank you.
Okay. And then the last, the last scenario is the neighborhood storage option. And so again, same charts. You see the costs are, are lower, we're up in that $55 million range. The benefits are slightly lower, because as that alternative is presented, there are some parts of the west side that it doesn't fully reach. You can spread those out over 10 years, spread that out again over 20 years. And at, at the risk of opening myself up to lots of que- I mean, we, we, this is basically a spreadsheet model. So if, if people have specific questions about what if we were to move something sooner or later, we can, we can certainly play with those scenarios and provide you with some additional information if you have questions. But hopefully, this is, is helpful in terms of understanding, again, the impact of phasing on both costs and benefits. And I think what I find is probably the most productive is to sit at my dinner table and take these nine maps and kind of lay them out side by side, and then put the ones with the inundation maps out together and kind of sit there and stare at them and see what, what comes across.
I only laugh, because with earlier sets of graphs, that's, charts, that's exactly what I did, you know, printed them out. And they take forever to print, by the way.
We can, we can get, if it helps, we can certainly get hard copy packets to people.
Yeah. And, and I guess the question is, and to your point, you could, you could move things around. You could do, you know, you could do the neighborhood storage project today over some period of time. You could have a plan to do more conveyance in whatever form that might take over time. Because if my recollection is correct, what you said at some meeting was, option one was really the biggest conveyance project we could do. Because otherwise, the pumping station, we wouldn't make, we would have permitting issues and we would have pump station issues if you made the pipes any bigger. That would be like, how do you maximize the pump station and then our permit to discharge water with, with option one? So there isn't a, hey, let's do a bigger pipe option one. That is the biggest pipe option one that exists. Is that, I get that sort of right?
That's correct.
And when someone asks, well, okay, that's 10-year protection, how do you get to 100-year protection? My recollection was, the answer was, storage. Because your pipe's as big as it can be, and all that, if you build a bigger pipe, all that, the bigger part of that pipe would be is storage, because it can't get pumped out any faster.
So there's, there's an analysis that the Burke team did, that, that's in a memo, and I, we can certainly provide it back out to people. But what they did is they, they were asked that question, how would we get to 100-year storage? And so they looked, the first thing they did is said, well, what if we combined the conveyance option with the neighborhood storage option? We built the storage upstream to hold some water back, built the pipes, and their analysis showed that if you built the sewer expansion alternative and all three of the neighborhood storage alternatives, just the way they are, you would get somewhere between 25 and 50-year protection. To get the 100-year protection, the pipes and the conveyance alternative would have to get larger, the pump station would have to have another pump at it, and you would have to discharge more to the river. Now, they clearly said, that creates a, a new dynamic of permitting concerns, because certainly, I think other people along the north branch of the Chicago River might raise concerns about what that impact would be. And so there have to be further analysis done to that. But that was, if you recall, there's a number that's been thrown around of about $150 million to get to 100-year level of protection. And that was, that came out of the Burke memo that included much larger pipes from the pump station all the way back through the village, as well as the three neighborhood storage facilities.
So could you do instead, if they could be identified, five neighborhood storage, you know, would that, are, are those, are those better incremental dollars versus a pipe and a pump station and a permit that probably, you know, that's, it's sort of an unrealistic expectation that anybody's, that the MWRD, the DNR, that anybody's gonna let us start cranking more water at a faster pace into the river?
It is, it's feasible. I think one thing we need to remember, and again, I'm asking you to kind of dust off some things from the past, but one of the things we talked about when we compared the alternative, one of the benefits of the conveyance alternative is that because it provides capacity to move water to the pump station, it provides, it's designed for a 10-year level protection, but it also provides some significant benefits for 100-year. Doesn't meet it across the whole west side, but provides some significant benefits. The neighborhood storage projects, when a detention basin is designed for 10-year, it works very well for a 10-year storm. When we get a larger storm and that basin fills up, we're kind of back to where we are today. It doesn't provide much additional benefit beyond that design level. So that's one reason why, when we looked at hybrids and how to mix these things, generally, there was a focus on a project that still included conveyance to maximize the use of the pump station, because that provides some benefit for those larger storms that, that unfortunately will occur. So that, I think that to your point-
Those were all those, those graphs that you gave us, you know, whether it was comparing one project in one neighborhood with multiple storms, or whether it was comparing the same storm with different projects in the same neighborhood, and you could see how lo- how high the water would get, how long it would last, when you would get back to curb level and things like that.
Exactly.
Okay, people remember those charts? So those were actually the charts that I laid out on the, on the dining room table. Trustee Funky.
Sure. I have a question on your, so your first option, sewer expansion option, no phasing, if you want to go to that. So I'm struck by the fact that the construction period in this is only two years, at least on this graph. Am I reading that right?
The construction period's probably three years. It's, it's year four of the program before you start to get ben- before you actually have a, a package completed that generates benefits.
Okay, before, okay, okay, before you actually get benefits. Is this, you talk about no phasing, so we're not stretching it out 10, 20 years, but is this still assuming that you've broken it up into like five construction contracts?
You probably would, just from the standpoint, again, of creating competition in the construction community. But, but again, we're talking about 40 some odd thousand feet of storms who are basically being constructed over a three-year period. This is, this is an army of construction equipment and laborers moving into Willmette for a three-year period and going at it. It's, I, I think, you know, in talking to our construction teams, again, they, you know, they kind of laugh. They'll say, anything's possible with enough people and enough equipment and enough money. But, but I think this is a pretty aggressive schedule for that alternative.
I guess I, I originally thought when we were discussing this one alternative, that we were actually talking almost seven years between design and completion. So I, I was just, you know, curious as to, you know-
This clearly would have concurrent contracts. So if we did break it up, and, and in the phasing, if you recall in this, when we had five phases, in order to get this done in five years, you are going to have multiple construction contracts going in parallel. So you might have, for example, a contractor building the large box culvert from the pump station back to the public works yard, at the same time that you have a contractor building, you know, the work in a different part of the village. And you might not necessarily build it in order, just because you may not want to have all the roads in one part of the village torn up at the same time. So that's another reason why the, you know, again, this is a very short period of time. So all your benefits kind of come at the end of this period, because you, you really would have to phase it in whatever way is practical to manage the impacts on the community.
But this, but this is a pretty high-level model. You're, you have not gone street by street and all that kind of stuff. This is illustrative, high-level, you know-
We tried to pick three scenarios that we felt were, you know, were reasonable, that we could apply to all three of the alternatives. And so I think doing this work in five years is very aggressive. I think, quite honestly, doing the, the hybrid alternative in five years is probably also pretty aggressive. Neighborhood storage, quite honestly, would be very aggressive as well, because you would have multiple parks torn up at the same time. And my guess is that from a standpoint of, again, impact on the community, there might be some concern about impacting that much recreational space at the same time. So, so this, as, as President Belinsky said, this is a pretty aggressive schedule. It's really just an illustrative point to kind of say, if we really go fast, here's kind of what it looks like.
Trustee Doc.
Are you, are you done? I was gonna switch direction to some, I wanted to come back to a point that actually you were speaking to President Belinsky about, just for a minute, and-
Yes.
Maybe, maybe I will resurrect the Burke memo about the, you know, what it would take for 100-year storm or whatever. But I just want to go back to this, the option one or the full conveyance option, which is, you know, President Belinsky talking about, really, the size of the pipes that you're proposing is really the largest pipes that we can handle, given the limitations we have at the pumping station, as well as the permit, in terms of how much we can discharge into the river. And I just, is the, is how much, and maybe this is a question for you, Bridget, not, but is how much we're discharging into the river right now, is that basically as much as, as the pumping station can handle? Like, if we could modify, change the pumping station, add another pump, or I don't even know if I'm using the right word, add another pump, but if we could add another pump, could we discharge more into, into the river? Or are we already at our capacity in terms of how much we're discharging? And I, it's an important question, just because I think a lot of ti- some residents have asked the question about, you know, just what it would take to fix a 100-year storm. And I'm, I don't think we're planning to do that, but I think it's a really important to understand that we, we have some physical limitations outside of our control, which is what we can dump into the river. That's a real important thing that we need to explain to our residents.
Right. So there, and Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong here, but there are five pumps currently at the pump station. And under certain circumstances, all five pumps are run at present. If, if there's enough flow coming into the station, the, the village turns all those on. In the analysis, it was originally done for alternative one, there was a suggestion to add a sixth pump as a redundant pump, not, not to increase capacity. So the idea is you wouldn't run six, but it would, right now, you have no backup if one goes down or else. So that was a suggestion there. I don't believe the village's discharge is actually controlled, governed by a permit currently.
We don't have, we don't have a permit like Winnetka. But who would have to approve a change to that? a change to that?
If, if, because a drainage area, and my understanding, because a drainage area to the pump station is greater than a square mile, if the village were to want to increase that pumping rate, you would have to go to the Department of Natural Resources, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, which manages basically the floodplain program in Illinois. And their criteria, you would have to demonstrate that whatever you were proposing to do wouldn't create any additional flood, increase flood elevations on the river here, downstream or upstream. And I think, dramatic, you know, in looking at the alternatives we've looked at, the alternatives that rely on the pumping station, as we've proposed them, would result in the pumping station running at capacity longer than it currently does, but not increasing that peak rate. And so there's, there's been an analysis done that shows that that, that's probably okay, within the range of what we're talking about. That doesn't cause downstream impacts. But if you were to, say, add another pump and increase capacity by 20%, I think it's likely that you would certainly be challenged and have to prove that that's not an impact, and that might be difficult to show.
Right. So maybe I misspoke in using the word permit, but there's approvals required if you were going to make that kind of change?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. I know it's in here, and I read it, but I don't recall right now what the answer is, and I'm sure you do. The alternative one is the largest size, I believe it's 10-by-7 box culvert for conveyance.
That's correct.
Is the hybrid also that same size along Lake Avenue?
It is. So the most downstream segment of the pipe is still sized at 10-by-7. The next segment, once you get to Laramie Avenue, where the public works yard is, and coming back along Washington, under the Edens, over to, all the way up to Ramona, there is a difference in size in those two alternatives. So in alternative one, I believe that's 108-inch pipe, and then under the hybrid alternative, it's downsized to, say, 96, because we don't have as much, we've now got some storage going on upstream. So there's been some, we did look at that when we modeled the alternatives and tried to make some adjustments in sizes, but it didn't affect that most downstream segment.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, trustee, will you...
No. Well, where I'm going with this is thinking about getting toward that 25 or 50-year flood protection. It sounds like that downstream portion could handle whatever was put into it from upstream.
Yes. That section is really, to some degree, it's designed to, again, match up with the capacity of the pump station. So we want to make sure that you have a resource in the pump station right now. We want you to be able to use that capacity to the extent you can. And so that, that's kind of what's driven the sizing of that segment.
Okay.
My assumption on the projects, the first two alternatives, was that we weren't using our full capacity at the pump station, and that that was designed to use that. And so are we confident that if we did use our capacity to the fullest, that we're not, you know, the putting in the water downstream, I mean, it's the same amount of water, but it's just obviously going in sooner than sitting on our streets, that, that that is sufficient to handle that?
Yes. So, two things. When I mentioned before that on occasion, all five pumps run, that's, that's looking at the whole range of storms that the village has seen. So if we get a 50-year storm, yes, all five pumps probably will run for a period of time. But no, we're comfortable based on the pump capacity, that, that matches up with the projects that have been presented. And then what we did is, we actually used the Water Reclamation District's model of the north branch of Chicago Rivers. They have a complete watershed model that they developed, and used that to do some analysis to see, depending on what the pumping scenario was coming out of the pump station, what would be the impacts on the river. And again, I think the easiest way to think about it is, while the west side of Willmett is large, it's relatively small in comparison to the overall north branch watershed, or the Skokie River watershed. And so, as you said, changing the timing of the flow coming in from that relative to the overall watershed does not cause a problem in terms of downstream impacts.
Any more questions for Mr. Johnson?
Okay.
Okay. Any, any questions for Ms. Berger, or Ms. Malloy, or Mr. Berman? Okay, don't go far. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're done yet here. All right, I will, I will open it up for public comment. The, the purpose of the presentation tonight was giving us more information, and as I suggested earlier, I think, I think it would serve us well to have Mr. Johnson available for a number of more meetings before we get to a decision point, which is now a frightening, less than two months away for us. So, but I, we will entertain any public comment that anyone would like to make at this point in time. And with regards to questions, if I could suggest that, rather than having an extended Q and A, certainly, we have, you all have Bridget's email, and we have a sewer email box. That might be more efficient. But, you know, please, Ms. McAllister, welcome.
Hi, I'm Carly McAllister Levin. We'll share a drive. So I have several questions. The first is a follow-up to Kathy Dodd's question. I think you were asking the finance director, Melinda, we saw a chart with the amounts going up, but we never see it going down. So I know, for example, I grew up with a well for water, and my mother is super excited, they're going to be able to have municipal water. And so they told her, it's going to be $1,000 a year for 20 years. So that's pretty easy to understand. But, on the graph that we had, you'd have to back up here. I think the question to Melinda, maybe she's gone.
No, she's there.
She, we're not all into finance, so she said they're 30-year bonds, but our, in our brains, we don't see how that graph comes back down. I think the average person just imagines like, oh, we're, it's $500 more every year forever.
It would, it would fall off a cliff. And let me, Melinda, let me answer, just because I am a finance person too. It would fall off a cliff, but to actually have your rate go down, you'd have to assume that no more bonds were issued over 50 years to build sewers or maintain sewers.
No, for this particular addition.
Yeah, eventually...
We saw the amount added.
It's like paying off your mortgage.
Right.
When you make that last mortgage payment, it goes to zero.
On the graph, is, I think, is why it was a question.
Yeah. It's like paying, Melinda, it's like paying off your mortgage, right?
Yes. What the graph does show is any other additional work that the village would do. So it didn't include any additional IPA loans that we might get to mine source. It wouldn't, it didn't include...
But just for this project, that was supposed to just show the amount added just for this project?
That's correct.
So how much more would it go up, for how long, just for this project?
So if you can remember back to the meeting that we had in November...
Bridget, why don't you, or, I'm sorry, Melinda, why don't you come up to the microphone?
It's just my first question, so I'll just sit here. Thanks. So when we met back in November, we had also talked about the fact that the village annually issues IPA loans, or receives them, for roughly $820,000 annually to do sewer lining work. And we also talked about a million-two-dollar, a million-two project that was for the stormwater pump station, that I think is going to occur in 2033. Those two combined would add probably about another $84 to that outside number that I had showed you before. So the point of me telling you this is that, over time, there's going to be other projects that the village is probably going to need to undertake, when, in regards to its sewer. But those are two that we know of, two types.
But with regards to her question, though, when you pay off the 30-year bond, it goes to zero.
You're correct. Those, that, the debt service for that is going to be roughly, for the high end, is roughly somewhere between $5.5 to $6 million annually in debt service. So after 20 years, when that's done, that debt service goes away.
And, but you would, but what you would do as you approach that, is you would be crafting your future bond deals around that, so that you'd have interest only while the principal was still outstanding on the old bond deal.
Correct. Yes.
And you would have new bonds sort of filling in the gap.
You are correct.
But, so, just to get it in laypeople's terms, for this particular project, they just want to know, for this particular project, are they paying another 30 years beyond that chart?
No, it's 30 years from the start.
No, it's just that, correct.
So that's the question is, can I put your slide on, on this page?
Thanks.
Where's the arrow button?
There's no numbers on this, but is...
In 2041, is that the high wa...
That's...
Is that the high amount?
Let John do it.
That's all right. Let's get you back to the other...
I thought I could do it.
I'll let you do it.
Don't worry.
Sit there for a while.
For your point of the cliff. Is 2041 the highest?
Yes.
It's starting to go down, assuming no other debt issued and no other projects.
No, it's not the highest, because it's a 30-year bond.
That makes sense, Melinda?
It does make sense, and for the most part, you are correct. What this then, but remember, what we also did is, this is assuming that we did all of it kind of upfront, and that, so those issuances were more compact, different than the phasing that has been talked about before and what have you. So is it all going to end in 30 years? It depends on the first issuance. And this actually, we know that we had a couple tranches that I was talking about, so it actually does go out beyond this a little bit further. In theory, however, when you issue the 30-year debt, after you're done with that 30-year debt, those payments go away.
So it's, but it's like, your mortgage goes away, but you bought a second house. And you got that mortgage now, too, to pay off, and, and then you've got the car loan to pay off as well. But, but in theory, it goes away.
Projects.
It goes away. The bonds are paid off, it's done.
So we're just trying to figure out how many years, because I just...
30.
30 years.
30 years. But 30 years from, so there's a set issued.
Each issuance, yes.
Are the dots like issuance, or...
No. The dots right now are representing, once that was later in overtime. So in option number one, that top one there, there was four or five different issuances that that made up. It goes beyond...
2023, 2026.
Yep. Usually where you see the largest ones is where those are occurring.
Right.
The, there would be an additional increase even after 2040, because the, how the, the matrix was working, but we just cut it off there so we could take a look. There, there is another...
All right. I think...
But, but again, the idea...
But, 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 Melinda, it would go, if you start in 2021 with an issuance, that issuance falls off in 2051.
You are correct.
If you had another issuance two years later, that issuance falls off two years later.
Yes.
And so, but, but basically, let's say you had five years of issuances. By five years, you're going to have a little drop, and then it is theoretically zero. But that's the way all of our bond issues do.
This is the project.
Yeah. That's the way all of our bond issues work.
That's that. All right.
Another question, I...
I do, you know, Ms. McAllister, I'm going to ask if others have questions too, rather than give you, rather than give you 30 minutes and then other people had a quick comment.
Okay.
Are there any other, if, if you're the only one, I will continue to entertain all your questions. Is there anyone else who does want to be heard? Okay, just trying to be fair here. Okay.
So, another question I've asked, I still haven't gotten an answer to, is that option one, installing larger sewers, could be coordinated in some sections with road reconstruction or water main replacement. But, because there's no numbers attached anywhere to that, it's difficult to see if that would save anything, and is there any estimate of what sort of savings we could come up with?
I'll ask Ms. Berger to email you on, on that.
Oh, well, I...
Because it is all a guess, remember?
It's on my list. It hasn't been, we've been prepared for this.
Okay. Thank you.
And it is, it is really pretty much an estimate and a guess at this point in time.
Absolutely. Well, we, what I had offered was, we could look at, say, a typical thousand-foot section of road, and say, here's the cost if we were to do the sewer, the sanitary sewer, and water main all separately, and here's what the cost would be if you were to do them all at one time, part of one construction contract. What's, what percentage savings would you incur through that coordinated construction?
Yeah, because I don't envy you guys' task. We also have water mains that are apparently in need of replacements.
We, yes, there's a, there's a program for that.
So, just from the standpoint of practicality, too, if a project gets approved, it's kind of insane to dig a street up twice. So we're just trying to...
Right. Agreed.
Figure out if there's any coordination, and if that would, I think Steve Leonard brought up the point of, hey, you could save money in the short term, but are we really looking at the long term, how we're phasing it and coordinating?
Let me, let me give it to you another way. It's like getting the shoes on sale for 25% off and buying five pairs.
Yeah.
Like, did you really save money, you know? So that's, that's the question that arises when you do that kind of analysis.
So that's still out there. I, Julie and I attended the North American Summit, and we happened to sit at the same table. And during that summit, we listened to a really inspiring speaker, Ed Lee, the mayor of San Francisco. Unfortunately, he died shortly after that, right after he held a big recycling event, so he was super dedicated. I just, in looking over these things, one thing that struck me was something he said, that in order for residents to feel like they've gotten their money's worth, and they're buying into improvement for their whole area, they need to feel like, one, the money didn't get embezzled, or misused, or misdirected. And Willmett never does that. So I feel super confident on that. Our projects have been super well managed. The other thing he said is, people need to see that there's results. Some of those scenarios are not going to show much of any result for a decade. So that's something to consider. There, there is such a thing as public relations element. If people see their bills go up, and then get told, hey, it's going to be 10, or 15, or 20 years, something just to keep in mind. And the last thing that's been a little, you know, in terms of how all these projects could be phased in, is, it's not totally clear, and this was mentioned briefly, how the parks would work out. It appears that there's no online or discussed detailed agreement about how that would work out. So there, it doesn't appear that there's, we've asked, it doesn't appeal that there's a detailed agreement about, with the park board, about how everything would be phased, how it would affect current usage, and what would be required. And in terms of the three options, so, I'm a little concerned about that. And another thing that struck me...
Well, all of the options have a park element to them, and we're certainly, we don't...
Well, not option one.
Sure it does. The golf course. The golf, the big pipe that runs through the golf course. So, we didn't want to get, we didn't want to get the cart ahead of the horse here.
Okay.
Certainly, everybody in the community, a number of park district commissioners have attended these meetings. I don't, I don't see any of them here tonight. But we didn't want to get the cart in front of the horse.
That's true, but what if...
Sort of figure out the cost of it.
If I, you know, it's just tricky to determine if, sure, you don't want to get the cart before the horse, but do we have a cart and a horse? If we just vote for one, we can't get the other, we're back in square one. If you want to go with the extended metaphor...
Then, then you can, no, actually, I disagree. Then, that just gives you a new meeting to go to. You know, so, I guarantee you, the park board would enjoy that as well.
Oh, that is exactly what everyone on the west side was hoping for.
No, look, I mean, we've got a very good relationship with the park district, the staff, and, you know, their offices are right there across the hall. I know practically every member on the park board, as I'm sure many of the other trustees do, and when we come up with a program, we'll have to sell them on the public benefit as well. Now, their responsibility, of course, is they're going to want to make sure the parks are protected as well.
I just want to be clear, then, that we're voting something, you said, if we come up with it, we'll have to sell them on it, just for the public to go in.
Any of, any of the alternatives, any of the alternatives, the park district has to work with us, just as they did on the West Park project.
Okay. And the last thing is, I'm a teeny-tiny concerned about all the discussion of 100-year protection, when I still haven't seen total buy-in to 10-year protection for the entire west side. There is such a thing as equitable services in a village. And I have talked to people in every single one of those lettered areas, and all of them expect to receive 10-year storm protection. So I'm just going to put in a final plug for option one, and since that is the most equitable solution, and that it provides benefits beyond the 10-year storm, that neighborhood storage won't, as was just explained. When a storage tank is filled, you're done. You have to just wait for the thing to drain. So, again, to get back to Mayor Ed Lee's point, people expect to see some benefit for the dollars spent. Something to keep in mind is that, with option one, people will see a reduction, and I know, for example, people like to get their measuring sticks out in Kilpatrick River and see how we're doing. So people will notice if there's an improvement, and appreciate the fact that their money brought them some benefit. So, something to consider. And thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. McAllister?
Oh, okay. I guess I can be on the spot, too.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Now, I know everybody said nobody else wanted to talk, but, okay, so I'm waiting, I was waiting to find out who wasn't really being completely forthcoming. Welcome.
Steve Pope, did you say that...
Steve Pope, did you say that the, that one advantage of having it broken down into phases because you could have smaller contractors and thus that's more realistic for greater bidding because bigger companies would limit?
No, I think the, the idea is there's kind of a.
Guys, move, move closer to the mic so, just so people will hear.
There's kind of a sweet spot in terms of construction contracts. Obviously, if we have very small packages, then you can have a very large number of contractors capable of doing the work. But not every contractor is capable of putting 10 by seven box culvert in and tunneling under the Edens. So the thinking here is to find a middle ground where the project is large enough to attract the type of contractors that do this type and size of work, but not so large that we're getting down to just two or three contractors that would be interested in doing the work. So the idea is to find a middle ground where you have a qualified pool of contractors who would be interested and enough of them to, to still have a competitive advantage.
But doesn't that, you're saying that could affect competitiveness, but also the timeline, right? Because if you have more contractors, it stretches out perhaps, or no?
Well, so again, the way we've looked at it with really all three of the alternatives here, we're generally looking at four or five construction packages, if you will, and that gets us into that 10 to $25 million range on those.
But it doesn't affect the timeline?
No, you can really, as, as we talked about before, I mean, these, you could have two $10 million contracts going at the same time. Obviously, you need to look at detours and how to do that so it doesn't impact the village. But no, there's a lot of flexibility and I think within, within the parameters we're looking at here, we're not really constrained as to, I like to say, I think five years is, is very aggressive on the, on the fast end, but certainly anything beyond that, you can work with these, with these alternatives that we've presented.
And do they ever provide incentives or if a company comes in, underbid or, you know, shows, demonstrates savings, that they get the potential to be rewarded with additional work? So if you had specific bid packages and you release the first two, let's say?
There's, there's lots of things that the village currently does in that respect. I mean, Ms. Burger, do you want to talk or just, I mean, there's all sorts of strategies in terms of design build and things like that that people can do, right?
We have really completion in seconds.
So yeah, those are the kind of thing, and it just depends on the project and the pool and, but those are the kind of things that the engineering department and our consultants think about.
And you could also have a company that maybe is larger, more sophisticated to handle the more complex element, like you said, under Edens, but more of the rudimentary stuff could be, okay.
Absolutely. I think even, even with the alternatives we've shown, there's a range, you know, there, there are some, I think there are some options that are eight, nine million or some packages that are eight or nine million dollars. There are a lot of contractors in Chicago, underground contractors that can do a project of that size. So, so yeah, the intent is not to, the intent is to try to, to, for this exercise, to try to package the, the, the projects so that they would be in a, in that middle ground where there's a lot of opportunity.
And then my last question was, and I'm late into this process, so I apologize if it's already been asked, but has somebody looked at the, the economics, if, if the pipes are slightly larger, even though we don't need them now because we know we don't have the capacity to pump, but you're sort of building for the future, knowing it's only 5% greater to have a larger diameter system, bless you, running through the city, you know, running through the village and then, and then 10, 15, 20 years down the road, we know we have that capacity. If we ever wanted to try and add more pumping, go to the DNR and all that, at least we knew we future-proofed ourselves or have they looked at that or?
We, we really haven't looked at going larger. There was an analysis done at one time where we're looking at trying to reduce the cost to see if, if we changed the level of service, how would that affect the size of the pipes and the cost of the project? And if people recall, what that showed was it changing the diameter by, you know, one size, so from an eight foot pipe down to a seven foot pipe, while it will save you some money, that savings is relatively small when you look at the overall length of pipe. And so the way, when we tried to look at alternatives for reducing costs, we found that really all, the, the only way to significantly reduce the cost of the project was to reduce the length of it. I, I think you could, you could probably flip that alternative around and say, increasing the size of some pipes a little bit here and there is a marginal cost relative to the alternative. That would be something I think could be discussed and looked at as a project moves into design and kind of sensitivity.
So all the four options you showed, the three ones in the charts, those are all the same size piping, they're just different options and therefore, if 20 years down the road, the village wanted to look at adding a sixth pump or whatever, what was just discussed, it would still have an impact. It wouldn't be that we were limited because the system was choked by the piping we'd installed or anything.
The, the three alternatives all were designed around the same level of service, the 10 year level of protection against street flooding, the pipe, individual pipe diameters vary a little bit here and there. The, the sewer expansion alternative and the hybrid that both include the large sewer going to the pump station, that last downstream stretch is the same size so that we don't, so that we, we make sure we're maximizing what we can get out of the pump station.
Yeah, and at this, at this, I think it's important to understand, at this stage of the game, I mean, we're not doing, this isn't really street by street. This is conceptual level type stuff. You haven't looked at what utilities might be in the way or things like that. That's the next couple million dollars, you know, that you have to spend to sort of get to that point of understanding, oh God, I can't put a 10 by seven in here because I didn't realize there's already three different pipes and a comm ed thing and a this, that and the other thing. So that's, this is very conceptual where they are now and that goes for the costs as well.
That's correct. That's why there's some ranges.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, anything else from any of the trustees? Any questions?
Yeah, please. And I would just want to ask Ms. McAllister if she had any other questions. I wanted to make sure you felt you had opportunity to ask them.
Oh, thanks, and, yep.
Okay, just, she's, she only introduced herself as Carleen McAllister from Willshire Drive, but I think, I want people to know if they're watching, that she represents a lot of people and it's not elected and it's not by choice because any, anybody who has been involved in stormwater in this village is not doing it by choice. But she does represent the hopes and aspirations of a lot of people. So I would just want to make sure that she has full opportunity to ask those questions because she's probably representing questions that have been asked to her from residents. And so I just want to make sure that respect is duly, duly given. I do have a question for, for, for Stantec though, if I might. So you made the comment tonight, as you did early in your, your work with the village, that option one provided 10 year storm protection to 95%, but we could get it to 100%. And then, but in between the very beginning of your time with the village and now, I don't feel like we've had that. So there's, I've detected some inconsistency and I'm wondering if you could just flesh out how we get this so that there is 100% coverage? I, I feel like that's been a little inconsistent from you, so I'm wondering if you could walk me through that.
No, that's fair. So if, if you think about stormwater drainage in Wilmot, there's really, there's two systems, if you will. There's the pipe system that we're focusing on, there's the storm sewers that convey the flow and get it to the pump station. In these large storms, a lot also depends on how the water moves across the surface of the land, right? So before the water gets into the catch basins, someone mentioned Kilpatrick, and anybody who's driven down there knows that one end of the street is 10, 15 feet higher than the other. So the water runs down that area. So the modeling that's been done at this point has focused primarily on the, on the sewer system and sizing that and making sure at the points that we've modeled, that when we put this flow through the system, those pipes can handle that and the level of water in the pipes will be below the street. We have also done, so then the question came up, talking about inundation and then what, where's the water going to spread out on the surface? So we have, have then gone and taken the mapping that the village has, the topographic mapping of the ground surface, and we've, we've blended that with the sewer network model that we've, that we've got and said, okay, how is some of the water going to move across the surface of, of that land? And we've done this at a very conceptual standpoint. So in alternative one, there are some pockets around La Crosse Avenue, I want to say, near, near Skokie Boulevard and Hibbard, where the models have continued to show some surface ponding in those areas. After the last open house, we went back to the team and said, what's going on here? This is, this has come up, we need to be able to answer this question. And the, the answer is, we've not modeled every, every small slope on the surface of the land on the west side. The way the model's set up right now, we don't have every catch basin modeled. So in our model right now, there's not a catch basin, if you will, at that point on La Crosse Avenue. So the water is running over the surface, it shows up as still being on the surface. We're putting 108 inch pipe down Washington Avenue a block away. I'm, we can certainly, and we can add this into the model, put a piece of pipe up that street, put a catch basin there. And I'm, I'm very confident that that water on the surface will go away. So I think there's some details to design. The other element I think is important, and we've talked about this some before, we talk about structure flooding. There may be value, as this moves into detailed design, to actually go out and survey low entry elevations of the homes in the areas that are most vulnerable. Because you can have two homes right next to each other on the street or across the street. If one happens to have a yard sloped slightly differently and some, some basement windows with window wells and the other does not, you can have water getting into one home and not the other. So there is some detail, I think, as we move into detailed design at the very local level that will be critical to making sure the final design takes care of everybody.
So why aren't we just calling it 100%? Why isn't that the, I mean, why, why are we leaving some ambiguity out there that res, that there could be some folks left behind in terms of reaching a 10 year flood protection?
I think you want to have intellectual integrity around your model. You don't just adjust it to make it be what you want it to be.
That, that's really right. I mean, at this point, we, you know, and, and again, the, the sequence here, right, we came in to originally review another model. We've done that review and continue to work with people, but we really haven't taken, despite the fact that we, there's been a lot of work done, we haven't taken that next step into, into more detailed design or preliminary.
And design, okay, design versus model, okay, that, all right.
Does that help?
Yes, that does. Yeah, Mr. President, that was helpful.
Yeah, no, and I think again, and I think, I think though this goes, and it is an important fact for the community to understand, this is conceptual.
Yeah.
The, the, the variances that we've seen on costs are part of that and also presumably the performance, it, it's conceptual. You know, there's a model and it's not, you don't have every single house located in exactly the same site. You've got an assumption of where homes are, you know, you've got the topography, but it's a model.
Yeah, certainly I understand. As you go forward, before you start to spend $10 million on building something, you want that certainty and that would certainly be part of the next phases of design to get that.
All right, well, thank you for taking the question.
No, thank you.
All right. Anything else on this matter for now? And again, I want to reiterate, it's maybe the fourth time I said it, this is not the last time Stantec's going to be before us, before April 17th. And I would encourage the trustees and I'm sure we'll put out, as we have been constantly, you know, looking for inquiries from residents, and I would encourage residents who haven't attended one of the open houses, you know, it's an opportunity to really talk one-on-one with the engineers and, and get all of your questions answered. Sometimes a public meeting is not the best place for the real specific type questions that you may have related to your property, your neighborhood, the project as a whole and the like. So if you can make one of the open houses, March 13th is the next one, is that correct?
Yeah, 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM and rolling into like 7:00 PM?
Yeah, until you have to send for the village board meeting.
Okay. All right, so trustee Wolf, I'll go back to you. I think that's all you had.
There were a couple of other items covered on consent, thank you.
All right, public safety, trustee Kersman.
No report.
Judiciary, trustee Plunkett.
All items covered on consent.
Okay, so there's no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, are there any new business to discuss? Trustee Leonard?
Please excuse me reading this statement, but it's important.
You may want to speak up just a touch or lean a little bit more into the mic.
So the heavy heart and great regret that I announced my resignation as trustee of the Wilmot Village Board. I've accepted an exciting new professional opportunity with a Detroit-based company where I'll be focusing on national facility expansion for a privately-held education provider. The new position will require relocation to Detroit and extensive national and international travel. But I wanted to say this has been one of my greatest privileges of my life to serve the community in the capacity over the last year. The time I've spent working with my fellow board members and Wilmot staff have been enriching and educational. Mr. Frenzer, Mr. Bremen and the entire village staff never cease to amaze and impress me. Their dedication and professionalism have been apparent since the day I joined the board last year. I've spent my entire career in the retail real estate development business, working closely with boards and staffs throughout the country. Never have I encountered a more highly qualified and effective group of professionals than the team assembled in our fair village. This is clearly a testament to Mr. Frenzer and Mr. Bremen's management and leadership and I thank you both for your kind words and well wishes. I also want to thank Bob Bolinsky for his support during the election campaign and during my brief term on the board. Bob's the ultimate professional and consummate leader. He devotes seemingly endless time to board responsibilities, which he completes with great finesse and passion. As Wilmot residents, we are all very lucky to have a leader like Bob Bolinsky as our village president. He inspired me to perform at my highest level while on the board and will undoubtedly continue to lead and motivate the other board members during his remaining term. To my fellow board members, I wish you all good luck and success in the future. I've enjoyed working with you as we've tackled some really tough challenges confronting the village. I'm very proud of the way we've all been able to address controversial issues, airing our sometimes differing perspectives without letting the conversations become personal or antagonistic. This clearly reflects the, the respect we all hold for each other, which is often not the case on suburban boards. Please feel free to reach out to me in the future if I can be of assistance, either professionally or personally. I've greatly enjoyed my time on the board and appreciate the confidence you've placed in me over the past year. Although I wish to, I wish my circumstances were different, allowing me to complete the current term, I know I leave matters in good hands and that the vital village business will be handled with the highest level of competency and skill. Thank you once again and good luck.
Thank you, trustee Leonard. I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the staff and my colleagues on the board. We thank you for your kind words. The question on everyone's mind after that, I'm sure, is, so what does that mean and what is the process? So Mr. Frenzer and Mr. Stein, would you tell the board what, what sort of happens from here?
Absolutely. So trustee Leonard will submit a written resignation that is notarized. Upon that submission to you, Mr. President, you have 60 days to submit a name of a qualified individual that's the same qualifications as if someone was running for office, must be a resident with, for the last year, qualified elector, not a felon and not owning, and not owing any debt to the village at the time of the appointment. Upon that 60 days, you will present to the village board for their consent and their advice, a name of an individual. If that is approved, that person becomes the trustee with all the rights and obligations. If that person is, if the board decides in a majority vote, including your own vote, obviously you wouldn't do that, submit to someone, but if there's a four vote, four to three vote or any other number where the person's rejected, then you get to submit a second name and go through the same process. If that second name is rejected, then you, without consent of the board, may submit or may appoint one of those two individuals and that person will remain the trustee. So it is a somewhat, can be somewhat long process, but it can also be somewhat of a very quick process depending on how it shakes out.
And I just, I want to add that we've had these vacancies before. When I was elected village president, it created a vacancy because I was still a sitting trustee and I appointed Alan Swanson to finish out my term. Historically, what we've done with these vacancies is gone back to prior trustees because in that way, people are knowledgeable, they sort of hit the ground running and quite frankly, if you look at the decisions that we have in front of us, sewers probably being the primary one, the village would be well-served by having someone who's already had the experience of sitting as a trustee. And as I go about making this decision, that will be my first step in terms of reaching out to former village trustees and village presidents to inquire as to their interest in serving in the role.
I think one thing we might have left out, just to be clear with everybody, because of the. of the timing of the vacancy occurring, the, an appointed trustee would only serve until the next municipal election, and at that point, a new person would be elected to fill the remaining two-year unexpired term, which is what occurred with, with one of our prior vacancies as well.
Right. So, you would have, you would have the normal three trustees that were up for their four-year term.
Yes.
And then you'd have an additional slot, separate and apart from the four trust, the three trustee ballot, with an unexpired two-year term. I think we've actually seen this recently with the park board, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. And we had it with the village board, too. I can't recall which, it might have been when trustee Pat Hughes resigned. But in any event, on the, that means in the April 2019 ballot, would have three village trustee candidates running at large for three position, or three, you would have three positions open to as many candidates as applied, running for full four-year terms. And then you would have a fourth ballot position, where however many people submit nominating papers, would be elected to the remaining two-year term of trustee Leonard.
Right.
So that the appointed trustee only serves until the next municipal...
Which is April of 2019.
Right.
So, a little more than a year.
Right.
And, and again, just for clarity, it's actually two, it's not, it's not like top four.
No.
It's top three on this ballot, top one on this ballot.
Correct. It's its own office.
Any questions for Mr. Stein or Mr. Frenzer? Again, Trustee Leonard, thank you very much for your kind words. You will be missed. Your expertise has been very helpful, and it was very gracious of you to offer your real estate expertise to, to this board and to the village in the future, if we, if we need it. And we probably will call upon you at some point in time. So, thank you, and good luck. As you described the opportunity to me, it sounds like quite an amazing opportunity, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the staff as well, thanks so much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item eight. Pending matters referred to standing committees, there are no actions to take there. Next item is item nine, adjournment, and this is the first executive session for this formation of the village board. So, my request for a motion will be a little bit different here. It's may have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to Section 2 Sub C, Sub 11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, yeah.
Oh, it's a roll-call vote? Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.